Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon in appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So I'm going to call this meeting to order Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. The invocation be given by Pastor Mark Matthews from Grand View Baptist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance be given by Councilwoman Sabino, leading their Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join me in prayers and pledge allegiance.
Once again, Father, we come boldly into your presence tonight on behalf of those that sit in government positions. Pray that you would protect them and their families, guide them in their thoughts and their actions. As Christians, we believe that you've established governments for the purpose of protecting the people of a community and a city, and these individuals that are here tonight are taking their jobs seriously, and we thank you for those that protect us in the rescue and Sheriff's Department. And then, Lord, we also thank you for the support staff of this city, those that work behind the scenes a lot and very hard. Pray for the city manager, that you grant him wisdom as well, city attorney, where all of these people are in your hands and in your care. Protect them, guide them, and be with them this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Councilor, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sabino.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present.
Mayor Yav Korm.
Thank you. Item A, reorder an additional removal of items from the agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Item B, public comment. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made and ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request the matter be adjourned at future meetings. Do we have any public comment?
Lynn La Forge.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I attended the February 27th council meeting this year and heard many people speak about their concerns with some of the residents of the J.C. Wallace House and maybe some concerns regarding the management. I believe those concerns are ongoing as far as panhandling and maybe some antisocial behaviors that are upsetting or even a little scary to some residents and business owners. At that time, we also learned that the J.C. Wallace House is operating with a conditional use permit and that the planning commission would be reviewing that. So I've just been wondering if that has happened and if it's still something that's going to be looked into, and I'd request that we get an update. Maybe it could be added to a future agenda for the city council. And so, thank you for listening.
Thank you, and it is being addressed and is being looked at, so nothing's been done yet, so they're still working on it. It's a long, drawn-out process, and we've got to make sure legal terms and everything's doing right, because we have to give that business also the opportunity to make sure that they are falling within everything, so that everything is being looked at.
Okay, thank you.
It's just going to take a while.
Okay, all right. I think it would be nice for the community to maybe hear that message, that it's...
Well, they just did now, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your concerns. Do we have any other?
No other public comments, sir.
All right. Go ahead and close. Public comment and special presentations. City Grand Terrace new employee introductions presented by Conrad Bolovich, city manager. Oh, wait, you're not Conrad, Michelle.
Yeah, Conrad got better looking real quick, didn't he?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. Michelle Fuentes, senior management analyst, and I'm here to introduce five of our new employees. I'll call each of them up individually. We have Natalie Oroz, department secretary for Public Works.
They had to give five years, too?
Yep.
If they leave early, they have to give back the shirt?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I don't want our finance department to just be wasting money on shirts. Just stand right up there, young lady.
Gabriel Arguelles, assistant planner. Antonio Reyes Lopez, office specialist. And our newest addition, Miguel Estrada, maintenance worker one. He actually just started last week.
Well, that's why his shirt's cleaner.
Yeah, you want us to say a few words first, or you want the picture? Sure.
Okay, council, you like to say any words about the employee? Councilmember Allen?
I'd like to say welcome to the Grand Terrace family. You know, we appreciate you choosing our city to be your, hopefully, your career. You know, we like to see stability here, and so, thank you for being here. Welcome.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Sabano, would you like to say something? No? Mayor Protem?
Welcome all. You know, it's tough to get good help, and it's tough to be good help. So we really appreciate your making sure that you impress the city manager well enough to come to work for us. But we are endeavoring to, as a entity, to keep our employees satisfied and educated and just generally happy, and we know that that comes with a price tag for you, where you're in there swinging every time the ball comes at you. But I think it'll be a very good relationship, and we're a family-oriented type of community, so feel free to move here if you're not already here.
Councilmember Henderson?
In my 37 years in the public sector, I worked for five different cities, including the city of Grand Terrace. I can tell you honestly and clearly, you're working, you're employed by the best of those communities. Welcome.
Councilmember Sabano?
Sabino.
Sabino. Michelle?
So, I'm the newest council member, also new to being on this side.
Did you get a bag?
I did not get a bag or any of the cool merch that y'all got today. I've sat on that side for so long, and it is a family environment, and so, welcome, and it's an honor and pleasure to have you all working with us. Thank you for choosing Grand Terrace.
Yeah, welcome to the family. If you ever need to, you want to come by my office and talk about your boss, I'm there from Wednesdays from 1:00 to 3:00. But you have to bring me something to eat, no. Welcome to the family, and you know, best of, you know, Godspeed to you, and you know, enjoy your time working here, and you know, hopefully, like Councilmember Allen said, you'll stay here for a long time. Make this a career, and not just a job, a career, and stepping stone. So one day, you'll be the city manager. You might say, "Well, how am I going to do that?" One day, you might be. So just, you know, keep your nose to the grindstone, and you know, just, you know, the respect that you're going to give the residents, and residents give you respect back, and you know, they're going to come in with complaints and stuff, but you know, just, you know, just talk to them and let them know what's going on, and that's the whole thing, because you know, you are working with the public, and you're going to be with the public, and you know, so just, you know, keep a smile going, and just keep going, and you'll have a good tender here. So welcome to the family.
To your comment, we only hire future city managers for five minutes. It's just a matter of time and experience. It's between a year and there.
I wish we would have hired a city manager, if you... No, I'm just teasing. Well, you, yeah, we'd like to take a picture of you guys, if you don't mind. Yep. Okay, we have a certificate appreciation for Lacy Kendall. So Judith Garcia, managing analyst, will provide information. Is this KCal Rocks?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members, I am Judith Garcia, management analyst with the city manager's office, and I am here today thrilled to present a certificate of achievement to Ms. Lacy Kendall, who graced the Blue Mountain Festival as the master of ceremonies. So, Lacy, on behalf of the committee members and myself, I would like to extend our deepest gratitude for your exceptional contribution to the success of the Blue Mountain Festival. Your enthusiasm, professionalism, and ability to engage with the crowd truly elevated the event and made it an unforgettable experience for all the attendees. We appreciate your dedication and commitment to our community, and we look forward to many more successful collaborations in the future. Once again, thank you, Lacy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Lacy, before we go through all this, we're going to let you speak real fast. Would you like to say anything? Because I know you were saying everything that day in Blue Mountain.
I think I said everything I needed to say at Blue Mountain. No, I did want to say this. About 30 years ago at my church, I met a middle-aged man, and he told me constantly I should move to Grand Terrace, because it is the greatest city in the inland empire.
Was that Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yeah, I'll tell you who was in a second. He said that to me for decades. I hadn't seen him in a while, but while I was there working on the stage at the Blue Mountain Festival, someone pushed a wheelchair up, and there was 100-year-old Pete Peterson, and he said, and he said, "See? I told you. It's great."
Yeah, Pete keeps going.
And he was right.
Yeah. He just celebrated his 93rd birthday.
Oh, is that right? He told me it was 100.
He wanted to hike up Blue Mountain, too, and we had to, like, slow him down. But yeah, thank you for everything you did, and it was great you being out there and, you know, keeping everything going and stuff. We have a certificate for you, you know, in recognition of your dedication and contribution to the city of Grand Terrace Blue Mountain Festival, exceptional skills and enthusiasm instrumental in making the event memorial, excuse me, a success. And councilmembers, you guys like to say any words? Mayor Protem?
Go ahead. You were fearless out there, and that's terrific. I really appreciate fearlessness. If you noticed, I sat over there and listened to the music and predominantly watched you manage back and forth and the comments and so on, and so, it gave a hometown atmosphere to what we just love, so thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Allen?
I'd like to say thank you for being here and that, you know, we still are the greatest city in the inland empire to live in, and if you're not living here yet, come on over.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
We have a lot of real estate offers. Michelle?
I just want to say your spirit and your energy that you brought that day were just phenomenal, and so, thank you for everything that you gave that day and just making that day just really special. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember, Ken?
My colleagues have covered it all, but you were wonderful, and I look forward to many more years of your participation. Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
So are you going to be doing it next year, too?
I don't know. Somebody's got to call me first.
Hello?
Hello, yes?
Well, we really appreciate, like, Mayor Protem, you know, keeping the crowd going and stuff, and keeping everybody lining, keeping, you know, just, you know, the timeframes and stuff, and it was a great event, and it's going to get bigger and bigger and better, and just like our, and we'd like to invite you to our tree lighting ceremony, all the ceremonies, just come on and check it out.
Okay.
And I'll tell, you know, Pete that I saw you, and he'll be all happy, but...
Okay, good, good, good.
Okay, well, if you could join us up here for a picture?
Thank you, sir.
You just flash it to the sheriff. I'm going to flash off. I appreciate all of you very much. It is a great city. Thank you, sir.
We have Scott from Supervisor Ral's office, and we have Matthew from Congressman Aguilar's office up there. So you guys, thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. I got your name right this time, Scott. Okay, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon. The city council, any one time without discussions, any council members, staff members, or citizens may request removal of the item of the consent calendar for discussions. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, Mayor.
Before we vote on the city, the city attorney's going to say something.
Yes.
I've got it written right here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah.
Yes, after the motion and a second, I'll read the title of the ordinance.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
Mayor, can I ask for withdrawal on consent item number six?
Withdraw for discussion?
Yeah, I actually would just like to pull it, and it can be considered separately.
Okay, so I need a motion from 1 to 5 and 7 through 11.
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendars, item 1 through 5 and 7 through 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote.
Before we do, I'll go ahead and read the title of the ordinance. It is an ordinance, and this is for item number 11, an ordinance of the city council of Grand Terrace, California, approving zone change amendment ZCA 23-01 to amend Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace municipal code by repealing and replacing Chapter 18.60, off-street parking in its entirety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, please vote.
I'm sorry, could you please re-vote? Something's not popping up right on my screen.
Now do it.
I'm still missing two. Thank you.
It's popping off.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
I forgot.
I know, I messed that one up. Anyway, because, you know, the Mayor Protem pulled one, and I was in perfect sync here, Mayor. So item six.
Item number six is really simple, Mayor. It's, I think it would be appropriate for us to see, even on a consent item, some kind of picture of the map. I like the pictures, and it's been a while, even though I've been here since longer than dirt, and I kind of think I know where this is, I don't see a picture of the map, and we should have one, so we know what you're signing.
That would be a good thing.
This is the project off Rosedale on the other side of Locadina. It's a five-house tract. But if you like, we can bring this back with a map, if you want to see a map.
Please.
All right.
Okay, so we'll bring item six back for a map. All right? Okay, we'll go ahead and close consent calendar. Public hearing done and finished business done. New business introduction of fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, plus continuation from the workshop. Christine, financial director.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members Christine Clayton, finance director. So as a continuation to our budget workshop for fiscal year 2324, the finance department had a clean audit and a balanced budget. For fiscal year 2425, the finance department will have a clean audit and a balanced budget. Those were our priorities. AJ, there's a PowerPoint in the special workshop. And so, tonight's presentation, we're going to go over property tax, sales tax revenue, then all of our revenues, and then our 2324 expenditures, and our 24, excuse me, that was actually done earlier, excuse me, our expenditures for 2324. And here is a picture of what is our property tax breakdown. You can see that the city of Grand Terrace gets about 20 cents for every dollar in property tax, and then you can see the Colton Unified School District and their portions, as well as the state. And then here's the revenues for property tax based on year. So on the far right, we have our actuals for 1920, 2021, 2122, 2223, and here we get to our projection for 2324. For 2324, and this is just property tax, we're projecting 4.8 million. And then for our budget, 2425, slightly higher, 4.9 million. And then this is just a graph from HDL that shows the trend in property tax for the last several years. Now on to sales tax, and again, it's the same formatting. We're going to start with our actuals, oops, excuse me, our actuals on the right and going all the way over to our budget on the left. So you can see there's been a steady upstream in our revenues from year to year with our sales tax, and HDL is projecting that it's still going to increase potentially in 2425. And then this is a graph, again by HDL, showing the sales tax by quarter, and you can see that we're consistently going up, when, as it's been described before, we're one of the only cities within the county that has a positive sales tax quarter after quarter. And here are our total revenues, and you can see between property tax, sales tax, sales of properties, and all of our revenue, again, with, oops, excuse me, wrong button again, actual from 1920 all the way to our projected budget of 2425, and we're projecting for 2324, 8.4 million dollars for revenues. Now expenditures by department. So you can see throughout the different departments, each year it's increasing, some are decreasing, but we're holding steady within each fiscal year. And then here's the second half of that slide with the remaining departments, and so you can see in fiscal 1920, it was 6.1, and it steadily increased, and we're projected at, for fiscal 2324, 3.3 million dollars. And within revenue, we've increased roughly $600,000 from '22 to '24, and we have that same increase in expenditures from '22 to '24. And so it would be this figure to that figure. And then this is our fund balance. And so, we started with actual fund balance on June 30th, 2022. We have revenues for fiscal year '22, '23, the expenditures for '22, '23, and that gives us our fund balance for '23. Our estimated fund balance as of June 30th, 2024 is that column right there, and we're projecting our fund balance to be at $13.2 million. Are there any questions?
Council, have any questions? Mayor Protem?
Before we get into questions, let me give a brief...
Okay.
So, between the workshop and what we've seen tonight is a steady increase, nothing crazy, but a nice, steady, healthy increase in revenues for the coming year. I think if you go back to Christine's revenue slides, let me go back here. We're looking at and projecting pretty much a flat revenue without any real increases. We're leaving a little bit of a decrease to try and be a little bit safe. What we're trying not to do is do one of those things where you project all kinds of crazy revenues to balance your expenses, and then you have a balanced budget that is unworkable or not realistic. So we're being very, very conservative on our revenue side. On the expense side, let's get to the totals here, we've pretty much matched expenses to revenues across, once again, being very conservative, and if you go back to our biggest, our biggest pieces is Public Works is fairly large difference in expenditures from, you know, '22 to today, with the biggest portions of that being things that we're doing for the community. We're paving streets, we're fixing sidewalks, we're repairing things. So those, that's where our expenditures are hitting. We're not hitting it in extra administration, extra costs in other places. You know, someplace, you know, take, just took a line, planning department over the last three years is pretty much flat. So what we've done is really balanced the expenditures and the revenues together so that we, go back here one more time, so that what we're doing is we're having a healthy, a healthy growth, a healthy community. We're not fighting anymore to keep our nose above water. We're not at a point where we have, you know, money to blow or money to waste, but in the last three years, we've had a balanced budget every year. At mid-year, we've had surpluses, that we've been able to do additional projects, and if you look at the fund balances over the last three years, we've been able to increase basically our savings account. Even with the additional expenditures, we've increased our savings account by well over $800,000, which helps our fund balances across the board, so we can do those larger projects down the road when we need to throw the money at it. So, all in all... So, all in all, I think we've done a pretty good job. We're projecting to continue to do the same thing. Manage our, be reasonable on the revenues, manage our expenses, put a little bit away in savings, kind of what we do at home or should do at home if we're decent stewards of our accounts. And, you know, some of the things that, you know, we talked about in the budget workshop are important to this, you know? We've balanced the budget, we've had surpluses, we've had revenue increases. Our increases are driven by project-driven expenses. So there's something tangible that we're getting out of this. Not, we're not paying wages, we're not wasting this money, we're not, you know? For an analogy, if we were at home, we're not going on a cruise, we're remodeling the living room. So those kind of things that add value to our community. And we've managed to do this by taking care of some of those deferred projects and now being able to do some of these projects that we've put money away from. You know, we did Barton Road, some of these projects we've done is Barton Road, improvements that you're seeing out here in front, radar speed signs. We're able to do that in mid-year, over mid-year savings last year, which is something that we, being by frugal and by planning and not overestimating our revenues, we have the ability to do that. We're able to do the flock cameras out of mid-year savings this year. You know, next year, we're going to do the ball field resurfacing. Or, you know, I was out there on Blue Mountain days and, you know, turned an ankle on the soccer field because it's so rough to get the baseball field and the soccer field resurfaced. We're painting and cleaning the building, park buildings. These aren't beautiful, sexy things that people write in the newspaper about, but these are things that add value to the community. We're investing in some things that are customer, and customer service is a big part of what we're working towards. We've done the parking lot, you can see around City Hall, we've gotten employees to park in the back so customers have a place to park and can come right in the door, not have to hike from the back parking lot. One of the things that is an expenditure this year is we're hiring a phone answering person. It's one of the big complaints I get from our residents, I'm sure you do as well. We call City Hall, nobody answers the phone. And we call and we call and we call, and nobody answers the phone, and nobody calls me back. And I know it's true because I'm upstairs, I call downstairs, and nobody answers the phone. And it's not that they're ignoring me, they're busy and they're away from the phone. So we're adding one person who will answer the phone, take messages, give information on a real-time basis on the things that they can answer, dog license, code enforcement, building permit questions, get our customers happy. And if it takes a little bit more effort, deliver that message and make sure that he follows up and gets that call back to our customer, to our resident that's doing that. So we're, it's an important part of our customer service. You know, we heard, we heard the building and planning group, both independently, talking about streamlining our processes, cutting down our time. And this is important for that customer experience for us. It's streamlining the codes. We've done some pieces, we've got some big pieces coming this year where we will forklift out big chunks of our code or change what we, the way we handle our code to make it more customer-friendly. And we're doing a lot on these projects for the aesthetics of the community and for the quality of life. And we've talked about pavements and sidewalks, the parkways, resurfacing the placement of parks through code enforcement, the RV enforcement. It was, it was a tough one for people to swallow. But now that we've got this kind of spill over back to where it's contained and the community looks better by having the trash can out, people can throw away their trash. We're doing tree planting. We have about $20,000 this year in the budget for tree planting, which isn't a lot of trees, but it's enough to start that. And in 10, 15, 20 years from now, that $20,000 will have grown into something that's worthwhile. And we, you know, to do this in every, every year. So we'll continue to do the paving, the landscaping, really work hard on the sales tax initiative. I think that's vital for our law enforcement. We saw from the lieutenant that, you know, we're handling more calls per officer, more calls per resident, more calls per hour than our comparable communities. We've been lucky. Sooner or later, that luck's going to run out. We have to put the resources out there to maintain the quality of life. And then, you know, we've, you as a council, we as a staff have looked at these big projects, the flood control, the mountain Vernon slope, and said, we need to put some of our skin in the game. And we need to take the initiative and not wait for somebody to help us. We help ourselves, and then somebody can help us when they see us helping ourselves. So this is some of that project money that's in there. And the two big things that we, that we want to focus on this year, you know, we've, we've taken care of the emergency crisis. We've taken care of being on a decent financial footing. We're not flush with money, but we're not scrambling and worrying about layoffs and how we're going to, how we're going to pay the water bill. But with these things, we want to really focus on customer service, our building permit times, the sheriff's station that we're just out there today to allow the sheriffs to deal with our residents here in the city, to deal with the, you know, our parking. I talked about the phones, the turnaround times on plans. All of these are customer-related things. And, you know, and we have this mindset, we keep saying residents. Yes, they're our residents, but they pay us. They're our customers. And we need to take care of them like a good business takes care of good customers. And the other piece that we want to really look at is quality of life. We have a great community, it's starting to look good. Our residents are such an aspirational group. They really, you know, look at the Little League, look at the Boy Scouts, look at the group, these parents want better for their kids, they want better for themselves. And this comes through a quality of life. Tree planting, continued pavement, sidewalk repair. Vicki was here talking about bus service for the seniors to enhance the senior quality of life. Vaccination clinics for the animals. We've done, you know, six to four. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it's 30%. We've improved our homeless situation by 30% and by real diligence by everybody involved. And then we're one of the few communities that really takes money and budgets money for these events, for the Blue Mountain Festival, for the Light Up Grand Terrace, that these things are important, that the council has, is going to set aside money for us to have those quality-of-life events that bring the community together and make us feel like a community. So as a package, this budget is balanced, a little bit of surplus, but, you know, $36,000 on a budget this big isn't that big a surplus. But it's conservative, it's balanced, it continues to support our projects, our quality of life, and our customer service and the way we want to treat our residents and our community. And so with that, we are open for questions and discussion with the recommendation that you can either take this as a first pass and review what we have in front of you, or we would certainly not oppose an adoption of the budget this evening, whatever is the council's pleasure.
Mayor Pro Tem, Wilson, you got a question?
Oh, before we get there, Christine's going to hit you with the rest of the numbers, right? Okay. This, this closes out our workshop.
Do you want us to, we have a questions on this?
Let's, let's do the questions now, and then we can hit the number piece. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, so in the overall, I mean, we're up to, what, 2025, somewhere in that direction. What's your crystal ball look like for the future? What kind of assumptions and what kind of dollars? It looks like to me that we're, we're being conservative, which I hear you, and we're also looking at it so that things are fairly flat. We don't expect any bombs necessarily. What do you see coming up? Because we all sat in a panel, we all, as I say, sat in a panel, and the last thing that we listened to over there in Arrowhead was a fellow that told us that everything is peachy keen, no matter what you hear. And so we'd like to see how we fit into that, that peachy keen trajectory.
I'll give you both sides of that. So from a peachy keen trajectory, we're doing really well. We've had good growth quarter over quarter. We're bringing businesses online in a thoughtful, coherent manner. You know, we, we brought Starbucks in. These, and these aren't big revenue businesses, but they bring in revenue and they bring a sense of place, purpose, and community. Loud Burger opened yesterday. So every quarter or so, the Game Store opened last week. We're bringing on these businesses that will continue our revenue growth. And there's, you know, we have Dutch Brothers and Kentucky Fried Chicken and the Car Wash, and these, these things will continue throughout. In the next year, in the next three or four years is when the big ones will hit. Lewis's project, the Gateway Project, will be up and starting to run. We'll start to see some sales tax revenues from that. We'll start to see some of the demand for, from the commercial demand from those residences. Our sales will go up, our stores will be more profitable, more things will get sold. We have a couple of businesses in the pipeline that we're discussing with. As Councilman Henderson knows, about 80% of these discussions derail. The 20% that really come through, we talk about them now. They really don't come to fruition for two, three, five, sometimes seven years down the road. But we are looking at a Kenworth dealership. We are looking at an equipment rental and sales yard. We're looking at some of the other, a school, a company that remodels and refurbishes school buses, the electric buses, just like we bought. They do the interiors and then sell them back to, which would be a sales tax generator for us. So these are all very positive things in the close and the farther long term. Our risk right now is more than half of our sales tax revenue comes from two businesses. And so those two businesses are critical to our success in the next five years. And if there's a downturn in those industries, we will get hit. So part of what we need to do as we're looking at, at our base is increase the spread of our base. Right now, our stool has one leg. Let's get a second and a third leg under that stool before somebody kicks it out from under us. And then property tax, you know, we've seen this continued increase in property tax. I'm not an economist, I have to take what the guy in Lake Arrowhead said, and, you know, his discussion. What I took away from is interest rates are not at a ridiculous number. There are still houses being sold. There's a bigger demand for housing than there is a supply. And it's very interesting, the first time I was at that conference, his predecessor, five or six years ago, made the argument that the L.A. Empire is lacking in jobs. There aren't enough jobs, there aren't enough jobs that pay, and it's warehouse jobs. And we need to, as a community, as a region, do better at that. Well, we've done better at that. There's jobs here, and there's jobs that are, that pay. They're not all warehouse jobs, contrary to what LA people think. So our next challenge truly is to provide the housing. So we have good, quality housing in Grand Terrace, and we have a good spectrum of housing, from apartments to high-end homes. We're not a niche city where all the housing is of one value or one stock. So that should insulate us a little bit. There is risk. And the biggest one, like I said, is that our two largest businesses get, you know, get the feet kicked out from under them. It would be catastrophic. So we need to diversify our base as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we go and comments? Okay, well, I don't know if this is, we go with this or our next presentation, but, uh, said our savings, so how's our rainy day fund? Are we six months?
This is our general fund reserves at $5 million. So basically, we are at about a third of our annual budget in reserves. Everything together, we have just about one year's of expenditure in one form or another in funds. So we're not flush with money, but we can weather a catastrophe for a period of time.
All right, I don't know if this is the right thing. So when I talked about the sale of the fire department, and we had that.
Yeah, we sold about Boxer Rocks.
Yeah. They got a good deal, they got a really good deal. But are we making, do we invest that money? Are we doing good on that investment on?
The portion that is set aside has been having decent returns. The stock market's been doing relatively well, so it's had decent returns. The remainder, the part that we did not invest, is in a, is kept in a separate fund, as well as whatever small proceeds were left from the childcare center. And this quarter, the bells are already going off. We have not had our sales tax discussion for the first quarter of '24. We're due with that in the next couple of weeks. But the bells have already gone off that we will have somewhere in the range of $2 million in one-time sales tax from the Condor Project. And we will, we will account for that separate from everything that's in general fund because that's one-time money, we will treat it as one-time money.
So on that separate funds, do we put that in a CD or a high interest?
It's kept in our, it's kept in our regular accounts with whatever the life interest is. But it's kept in our regular accounts. We just account for it as separate and so that we're not spending it and, and accounting for it as part of our general operation.
So are we using the interest that we're making off that fund to work on our unfunded liability?
The money from the fire station that went into the PAR's account is dedicated to our unfunded liability. The remainder that's still in general fund is just part of general fund money. We would, it would take an action from the council to set that money aside. And when we discussed that a couple of years ago, there was some hesitation on taking that big chunk and committing it to unfunded liabilities.
At the top of your head, what's our unfunded liability responsibility?
About $6 million.
I know, Councilman, anybody else have a question before I open a comment? Councilman Henderson, you had a comment?
The council and the community have heard me say on more than one occasion that about my public sector tenure and the number of cities that I worked for, one, including Grand Terrace, to place the comments of the finance director and the city manager in context, 10 years ago, I was serving as the interim city manager for Grand Terrace. And I took the position after the city council had laid off 66% of the existing staff. So myself included, there were 13 of us working here in the city hall. It was a near-death experience for the government and for the community. And so we owe our thanks to some extremely hard-working people, talented who were able to dig us out of the hole. I say all that to say this, what Mr. Bolowitz and his staff have done for this community, the importance of which cannot be overstated. A few days ago, I mentioned that my wife and I celebrated our 40th anniversary here in Grand Terrace. And in all the years that I've lived here, in my view at least, we've never been in a better position in terms of our financial condition and our financial strength. And I know this may sound premature, but the direct credit for that goes to Mr. Bolowitz and his staff. What he has done on behalf of the community is significant. It's important, not only for today, but for the future. So I'm hopeful that the community, those on here tonight and those watching on the streaming service appreciate the hard work that has gone in over a number of years. You don't get to this point in municipal finance by snapping your finger and saying, "Things are okay." And so what's happened here is to be emulated not only for, for the future, but also other communities surrounding Grand Terrace. So I wanted to extend those comments to staff and the community and to my colleagues on council. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the staff, it is the staff's effort, and it's the council. You know, it's work all the way across the board. And it's not easy, and the groundwork we're doing today, the day I started here, and I still believe this, is I'm not going to make significant changes. I'm going to lay the groundwork so that the next guy, five, seven, 10, 15 years from now, whoever fills my shoes later, is able to do the things they want to do so they don't have to do the things you and I had to do when we, when we were here. So thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? I, I concur with Councilmember Henderson. You know, it, the staff from the past and the present, the council from the past and the present, working, you know, like you said, doesn't happen overnight. And, um, yeah, the city went through some rough times, and that council had to make some hard decisions. And, you know, people had to work together, and our, um, city, civilians, the leaders, they, they came to bat too. So it was definitely a team effort, and it's a team effort all the way through. Like I said, you know, the mayor's before me, the council members that I worked with, and the councilmembers before us, they all had, they all have a vision, and that's to work here and make their city better. So the other comment I have, one last question, is when are they opening up that ice cream parlor? Because I hear that all the time.
They are getting ready for final inspection. So the Baskin Robbins is, is out there on the horizon. By the time it gets hot, we'll have ice cream.
And how about the pizza place too?
That's, there's a downside on that one. That one seems to have been one of that. As I said earlier, a lot of the projects, they really don't come to fruition, and this one went a long way down the road before it.
So the ice cream's coming.
Ice cream's coming, hold off on pizza.
All right. So, um, so no more comments or questions, so we want to continue on?
This, this is the conclusion of the workshop.
Okay.
And now Christine will do the full-on budget presentation.
So this is our proposed budget for fiscal year '24-'25. So here are our 20, 30 visions and goals, and these are the points that the budget hits. So for the city of Grand Terrace, the general fund reserves, excuse me, revenues are projected to be eight point two million, and the expenditures are projected to be eight point two million. And there's roughly a surplus of thirty-eight thousand. The sales tax was provided by HDL, and they're projected at one point three million. The property tax provided by HDL is three point two million. And the VLF swap revenues are projected to be at one point seven million, again, provided by HDL, our consultant. Now we're going to go into the general fund. So here are the general fund reserves. And we're going to start with our adjusted budget for '22-'23, our actuals for '22-'23, the adjusted budget for '23-'24, our projected year end for '23-'24, and then our proposed for '24-'25. So as you can see, our projected year end for '23-'24 is eight point four million, and our proposed budget for '24-'25 is eight point two million. Again, that's being conservative for that just-in-case. And here's just a pie graph to show you that the main portion is property tax. And here are our general fund expenditures. And you can see adjusted for '22-'23, our actuals for '22-'23, the adjusted budget for '23-'24, our projections for '23-'24, and our proposed budget for '24-'25. So our year-end projection for '23-'24 is eight point three million, and our proposed budget is eight point two million. And the main piece of this was under professional and contractual services. We're trying to bring some of that in-house and do the work between building and safety and planning versus using a consultant. And this is just a graph showing the different accounts. And then tonight, introduction deliberations, and if you're ready, we can do adoption. If you need to continue this for another night, we can do it at the meeting on June 25th. Are there any questions?
Councilman Henderson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I don't, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say this, I'm prepared to adopt the budget. I think we have the kind of information. At the same time, I think it's important for the community to have an opportunity to review what's being proposed by staff. And so I would propose that we consider formal adoption two weeks from tonight.
Okay, anybody else? Councilman Allen?
Is that a motion? Because if it is, I'll second it.
Yes, that's my motion.
All right, I'll second that motion.
All right, Conrad, would this have any, would it be a problem adopting it?
Okay, this, this is what we're, we were expecting this. We're shooting for the horizon on a, hoping for adoption tonight, but there's a lot of numbers. I, I know in the, we didn't bring them all out in, in public, but there's a lot of numbers in the packet in the staff report, and it's going to take a little bit of time for everybody to be really comfortable with them. So we expected that this, this is going to be a two-meeting process. And, um, that, thank you for the confidence, and I, I think it's a good idea the public have a look at that too.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, so when we bring it back to 25th, we'll have a public comment then, Mayor?
Just for the record, sir, there is no public comment tonight.
So none tonight, but on the 25th, isn't it?
We, we can either, yeah, we'll have it as a regular item. We could have put it on consent and just have, but then somebody will pull it for comment.
So a public comment.
We'll just have it as a regular item.
Okay. And it's not going to affect anything on the city's function by waiting till the 25th?
No.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any comments or want to make a? No? Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Henderson to bring it back so the public could look at it and, um, for a vote on the 25th. I have a second by Councilmember Allen. City Attorney, you have anything to add to that? All right. Did you get that, City? Are we good?
Yes, if you would like to vote.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the bosses, it's all right. Okay, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Christine, for, you know, balancing the budget and, you know, and, um, working with us, and, you know, and, you know, we are conservative, and, you know, you're keeping the future bright for Grand Terrace. And I know it's, it's kind of hard, it's a whole lot of difference than balancing my checkbook, you know. So it's a lot of predictions. So thank you very much for all your hard work and your staff's hard work. So future agenda items, at this time, the city council may propose for discussion and action that future duly agenda items for the city council meeting, the consensus, the majority of the quorum, is required to place an item on a future agenda. Do I have any requests for a future agenda item? No? Okay, so let's go ahead and move into, uh, city council communications. Councilwoman Michelle Sabino.
Thank you. Let's see, last week, yeah, last week, we attended the ribbon-cutting for Venture Origins Game Shop, which is one of the newest, um, one of the newest businesses locally right over by Vegan Corner. And so we all had the opportunity, not only to meet the owners, but to see some really awesome vintage, um, gaming systems that they have there. And so I, I got really excited about Kaboom, that it's a simple Atari game from back in the day. But, I mean, the, the mayor, we had to drag him away because he started reminiscing about every single game he'd ever played.
It might be vintage to you, but I grew up with it.
And then I just want to mention tomorrow, there is a Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce meeting at seven forty-five at Get Loaded Guns and Ammo over on Michigan. And so if you haven't been to a chamber meeting, you want to meet your local businesses or see Conrad again two days in a row, we would love to see you there.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson.
Ditto what Ms. Sabino said.
That on vintage. Okay. Councilman Allen?
So, yeah, I also attended the grand opening of the game shop. It's a cool little shop if you're into those things, go, uh, those old video games, computer games. On Saturday, June the first, at eight AM, we had the, uh, Health, the Healthy GT Crew from, that's, uh, doing the, um, smoke-out walkathons over at the Rollins Park, you know. So I went over there and, and I was pleased to see that these, they're so dedicated to wanting to improve, um, you know, that area of interest that they have, which is creating a smoke-free outdoor environment in all of Grand Terrace. And I, and I applaud their efforts for it, and I really support them. On, um, May the 29th, I was invited to go on the Northern, the, um, Northern California Water Tour. And so that, that was quite an experience. It was a three-day tour that started in Lake Orville, and we toured the Orville, Lake Orville and the Orville Dam. And then we traveled down along the Feather River and the Sacramento River, and we toured the fish hatcheries where the state breeds the fish. And, and we saw the fish ladders and all the ways that the, the salmon and the trout are, negotiate the Feather River Dam. And then we went on down to where they're going to build the new one point six million acre feet reservoir, the Sights Reservoir, which is supposed to be completed around 2045, and it'll flood a valley that's about fifteen miles long and eight miles wide, three hundred feet deep. And, um, the town of Sight will no longer exist, but the reservoir will, you know. And then we went on down to, toured the, um, the business that makes the screens that protects the fish from entering the aqueducts and the dikes and everything. And then we also toured the delta and the, went all the way down to the Bethany Reservoir where the aqueduct begins that brings the water down here to Southern California. And I'm telling you this because, you know, a lot of people here in Grand Terrace are like I was when I moved here for several years. I mean, I thought my water, I turned my water tap on, and I had Riverside Highland to thank and that my water begins and ends with Riverside Highland Water Company, but that's just not the case. You know, I mean, that, they are our water provider, but we have to, that water has to get recharged. And so they are a customer of the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, in which if you look on your property tax bills, you will see that we all, there's a line item on there, and everybody in Grand Terrace pays a little bit to the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. And so I thought, well, this would be a great, you know, tour to go on, a great, um, to see what our money goes for and what it's going to be going for in the future. The Sight Reservoir, uh, the combination of the Sight Reservoir and the Delta Tunnel, which we also got a tour of that project, the Delta Tunnel project, the forty-five mile-long tunnel underneath the delta that's forty feet in diameter. That's an amazing project, and I just, I, you would just be astounded by what they're going to do there. But it's going to bring us clean, fresh water for years to come, generations from now. But you know what? The guys who built, and the ladies and the men who built the water source we have today, they weren't thinking only about themselves, they were thinking about us. And so we have to start, we have to think about three and four generations from now and making sure that there's water for them all over the state. And so what I was going to do is, this is such, it's such an interesting tour that I went on, that the director of the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District told me that rather than me giving some long, extraneous type of a report, like I'm doing right now, they would be glad to come here and get on the agenda and make a presentation about what they do for the residents of Grand Terrace. So I, I would like to do that in the future, have that on the agenda and have a presentation for them. They have great visuals and all that stuff. And I think you would all understand then how really, really vitally important the California Water Project, the State Water Project and the Delta Tunnels really are. You know, the billions that we spend on fish to protect the fish and the billions that we spend to protect all those islands that are sacred to all those that lived here long before we ever came. It's really amazing. So I'm, that's the big thing that I did in between the last two meetings. And I look forward to that, getting that presentation on the agenda for you, all of you to see just exactly what they do for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like the city clerk's attention. At this point, I'd like to set up to be able to go to, in a similar vein to that, the August ninth water conference. Yeah, I'd like to get there, get registered for that, because as you know, last year I attended one, and it was terrific. We had the NOAA man there who talked about satellite use and how they determined the climate zones and so on, and sat right next to him, in fact. And ever since I went out there to the desert and realized that even though this is the desert, that was really the desert, really very much the desert, and water is more important than building permits or entitlements or anything else. So you don't have the water, you don't have a project, you don't have any, you don't basically have a city. So I'd like the opportunity to continue that education. And I'm looking forward to the rest of our budget deliberations. And that's about all I have. I'll defer the rest of my time to the mayor.
Well, thank you. You guys are making me thirsty. Anyway, a suggestion. You know, Chad, I want to thank you for putting together a memorial service for men and women who gave the ultimate price of their lives for our country and, you know, the families. So I saw and I heard nothing but good things, and I guess some young lady knows how to really sing there. So, uh, and then, um, so really appreciate it. You know, I attend a little service, I was in South Carolina with my grandsons. We had to take care of them, and we had to go to a lung specialist for my little grandson. So thank you for all your prayers, he's doing a lot better. But yeah, so I, I missed it, and, um, but you guys are in my heart, you know, and, uh, like I said, I really appreciate it. And the Blue Mountain days, you know, thank you for all the volunteers. I know we recognized, uh, Lacy, but, you know, so many people put in the work in there. And, um, you know, I'd be a miss to, you know, I was hoping the band and more seniors came, but you know what? God bless those seniors who showed up, you know. And, and it was brought to my attention that the seniors had a makeshift banner. So I would like next year for the council to donate the banner for the graduating class and make that a tradition for these seniors on, when they're marching in the parade, so they could have something. So, um, you can even take out my pay if you need to, but, you know, I think it'd be nice to recognize them because we are proud of our seniors in the graduating class, and we're proud of all the students, and, you know, the Boy Scouts come in there with their, you know, presenting the colors, the flags, and the little kids walking, you know, and, you know, our cheerleaders out there cheering, and even Dan's dementia, the little kids out there doing that. And I also like to invite, um, you know, uh, kids who are in homeschool, you know, because they're a very important part of our community too. So I'd like to have, you know, recognize them in the parade. And, uh, but, you know, I know it's just going to get bigger and better, you know, just like our tree lighting ceremony. But I would like the council to do that for the graduating class, you know, a banner for the seniors each year. And, um, so I inherited a subcommittee, SKAG, a Community Economic and Human Development Committee. And I'm like, what is that? You know, so, so I'm reading all this stuff when I'm trying to take care of the two little grandsons. But I had to drive to LA, downtown LA. And I haven't drove to downtown LA since I transferred out of prison back in 2002. And I didn't miss anything when I drove to downtown LA. A part of the thing was, we're talking about, um, housing. LA right now, they just got their homeless count. I know how we said we, we lost two. LA is experiencing the city forty-five thousand homeless. And it was, you know, when you drive down Wisher Boulevard, and, you know, we always knew LA is, you know, like, uh, Skid Row and stuff, but, you know, there's families out there living and stuff. And, you know, and it's, personally, when we're putting money into it, I think we're going to have to do something else besides this. We're going to have to, you know, because I'd rather see people being taken care of in institutions and being, living out there like animals. And, and it's really sad because they're becoming victims too. And the number one homicide for homeless is, um, it's not getting stabbed or getting shot, it's getting beat up. it's getting beat up. And there's a lot of, you know, human trafficking involved and everything else. So, but going in there, they were talking about a housing, they have a HOP, one twenty, HOP eighty for LA County has for, because we think of affordable housing as section eight. It's not section eight. Affordable housing is like somebody for my kids or anybody else's kids, because housing that we just talked about is getting expensive. So when you hear affordable housing, they'll just think section eight. It's for affordable housing, so people, families can buy a house. And I was proud, and I said this during the conference, our city back, and I think it was the nineties, ninety-five, ninety-six, when we had a program here where we were able to help first-time homebuyers. And the city took a second out and they fixed the house up. I think they were HUD homes. I'm trying to remember. I don't think we have any more HUD homes nowadays because the market the way it is. But we were able to get families in there, into the housing and stuff. So it was a really good program. And it was, you know, I was proud to say that our city did that. Are we going to do it now? I don't know. The housing market's a lot different than the nineties. Everybody wants a house. But this, this other program, similar like that in LA County, I don't know what San Bernardino County has. God, I'll talk to Supervisor Don Rowell, see if they have anything similar to that. But it's a good program, and it's to help people. And, but they had a pro, they had built sixty-five homes in Irvine, and they had sixty-eight hundred applications. And these were for, these were families. So can you imagine? They had to go through them. And they check your background, and they check to make sure you, you know, you're able to afford it and you're able to pay. Because, you know, it used to be at thirty percent. Now people are going fifty to fifty-five percent of their income to buy a house. And it's kind of crazy. But it is just neat how they're still thinking about that. And I was wondering, San Bernardino, I'll look into it. I'll, I'll write to the lady from LA to see if they have that, so I could pass that down. But, you know, like I said, I was proud of seeing our city that had that program we used to do, but that was decades ago. But once again, you know, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And, you know, thank you Supervisor Rowell's office and Congressman Aguilar's office for coming here and, you know, representing. And, you know, and our, congratulations again for our Citizen Patrol, fifteen years, you know, running the streets of Grand Terrace. So you know every nick and cranny of this place. But, you know, thank you for your volunteering and your dedication for your service for doing that. And at that time, I'll go ahead and close and leave it to city manager communication.
I have nothing to add. You guys have covered it. And really, thank, thank you to Lieutenant Lane for his work on the sheriff's annex. It's going to be a great thing. It's going to be a great place for the Citizen Patrol. And after being in there, if the sheriff thing doesn't work out for the lieutenant, he always may have a job in interior design.
Yes, white paint is in. So they're going to put bunk beds in there and everything else, you know?
Uh, we don't.
But, you know, hopefully, and we, yeah. Well, I was just wondering if I get in a doghouse, I have somewhere to go. So that's, the mayor's quarters. So we, we talked about some stuff for your, your little kitchen, too. So hopefully the city can help men and women out there, some things to add in there. Okay, we have a closed session done. And, you know, Mayor Proten, thank you for taking my council meeting while I was away in South Carolina. I really appreciate it. I heard you did a really good job. And, you know, thank you very much. And, you know, that's what's great about this council, you know, we're, we're teamwork. We all work together here. And I appreciate it. And tomorrow we have an open house for the fire department. You want to talk about that real fast and invite some people on?
Yeah. So tomorrow at eleven-thirty till one o'clock at five nine eight South Tippi. That's going to be our new headquarters for the San Bernardino County Fire District. And you guys are all invited to come down. Hope to see you there.
Great. We didn't sell that building to you.
No, no, the airport did.
Okay. And then once again, I have, my doors open tomorrow, Wednesday's from one to three. So you guys, anybody's welcome to come in. I'll be going there right after the, the open house. So we'll go ahead and adjourn this to the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at six PM. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made and written and submitted to the city clerk's office. I want to thank my council members for the job well done tonight. And thank you, the city staff. God bless and have a good night.